Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Alderman Waldeck is absent. Alderman Biedler?
Here.
Alderman Moore?
Here.
Alderman Panda Leon?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg is absent. Alderman Aylman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno is absent. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
And I'm here, too, just in case. Could I ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First comment, first item on the agenda this evening is comments by Mayor. There are two things on the agenda, but I did, and I know Bob will bring this up earlier, but I wanted to particularly mention, the last 24 hours have been pretty unique. One of the biggest snowfalls this community's ever seen. And, Michael, I want to take this opportunity on behalf of every resident in Lake Forest to thank you and your entire team. Can't imagine what the last 24 to 30 hours have been like, and I noticed you nodding off a little bit before the meeting, but on behalf of the residents, you know, I tell you, the roads were incredible. It was obvious they worked unbelievably hard. I can't imagine the amount of hours they put in, so please accept the thanks of the community to you and your entire team. Next item on the agenda, resolution of appreciation for Robert Henderson, and I'd like to read the resolution if I may. Whereas Robert Henderson has been a dedicated firefighter/paramedic of the city of Lake Forest since August 28, 1989, and whereas Robert Henderson will honorably retire from the city on January 8, 2015, and whereas Robert Henderson served in the following positions during his dedicated career, firefighter/paramedic from 1990 to 2015, city's benefits committee, physical fitness coordinator, department's dive team, and firefighter's pension board. Whereas during his career with the city, Robert Henderson accomplished the following: He was awarded several honorable mentions from Lake Forest residents, and he received several certifications through the office of the state fire marshal. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Robert Henderson for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and is hereby instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Robert Henderson this second day of February 2015. Do I have a motion to pass the resolution, please?
Is that moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously agreed. See here. Bob?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Just briefly, I would just like to say it's been my honor and pleasure to serve the city of Lake Forest and residents these last 25 years. It's really been a great and wonderful experience for me, and the opportunities it's presented has been fantastic. I'm just very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next item on the agenda, swearing in a police officer, William Wright. Chief Hell? Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, William Wright.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The constitutions of the United States.
The constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce.
And will diligently enforce.
The laws of the state of Illinois.
The laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Lake Forest.
And the city of Lake Forest.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. Next item on the agenda this evening, comments by city manager Bob Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce certainly one old face to this council chambers, and one relatively new. Our county board representative is former Mayor Mike Rumel and Ann Main. Mike and Ann?
Thank you, Bob. We're here tonight to talk about a couple of items that have been going on. We have not had a report to the city about what's going on county-wise, and so I felt it was a good time because of the award that the Middle Fork got, and Ann's going to talk about that, that we come and tell you what's going on within the county. First, I want to say thank you to Bob Kylie. You have a, we have a gem in the city manager that we have. He has worked with us in a number of issues. We've worked on things that he's brought forward, so I just want to say thank you to him. And I also want to say thank you to Kathy Waldeck and Prue Biedler, who came to our summit a couple weeks ago. What the county is working on, since we don't have much within the city of Lake Forest, it's county, we're working on things like 911 dispatch and how to get countywide 911 dispatch to help all the communities. We're working on joint purchase agreements. You purchased salt with us last year, and we're looking to bring that down to pencils if we possibly can to help buy within bulk within all the county communities to get, save, have savings to our residents. And then we're also starting an initiative with a regional approach of cities that work together to solve one common problem, such as drainage or something. We're looking to see how we can, as a county, work to do that. So on the county side, that's kind of the update of where we are. On the forest preserve side, a lot of exciting things are happening. First, today we got word from the Army Corps that the Glyphre project was approved, so that means we'll be coming back shortly to talk about that with the city and how that can impact you and help everybody. So that's kind of an exciting piece. The Middle Fork Bridge continues on. We're finished with Phase 1 engineering and going into Phase 2 engineering with the idea of working towards this fall to get started on that bridge. And then long-term, the Middle Fork Greenway path has now made ICIP budget, which means that it's on the horizon. It doesn't mean we're funded, it doesn't mean we're doing anything with it, but it does mean we're there. But let's talk about what's funded. I'm going to turn it over to Ann because she has worked so hard on these items. First is Everett Road, second is what's going on at Fork Sheridan, and then finally the Middle Fork Award. So Ann Main, who is the president of the forest preserve and our representative in the western part of Lake Forest, will be up to talk about this.
Mayor Alderman, thank you very much for having me here this evening. As some of you may know, I've spent a lot of time in the city of Lake Forest, working for the last 22 years and still, at Bob's alma mater, Lake Forest College. So I've been in Lake Forest a couple times a week for many, many years, and I'm not sure this will show, I just can't get away from my teaching background. I always have to have a visual aid, so I'll have Mike be my Vanna White here. So a number of years ago, boy, maybe a decade ago, the city of Lake Forest, the forest preserve and the Villa, I'm going to leave this here with you guys, and the Village of Lincolnshire worked together to connect the path, Village of Lincolnshire path that comes up Riverwoods Road, and then heads east along some forest preserve property over the bridge connecting with the city trail system. And it has long been a goal of many people I know in Lake Forest, Lincolnshire, other places, Alderman, Aylman, you'll be so happy. So anyway, to make the connection from Riverwoods Road west over to St. Mary's is, engineering is underway, and it will be constructed next year. So we're really excited about it. People have been through the roundabout. If you haven't been through it as a pedestrian or cyclist, I've been through it a number of times, mostly as a, well, certainly driving, but as a cyclist. It's all set up with that in mind. It was always anticipated that there would be these connections, and so there's already the curb cuts, there's already the space at the corner, so a cyclist could wait safely and go through. So we're really excited. There's a hundred, about 100-foot strip along Everett Road that the forest preserve owns, going back to the Granger days, and then it moves into the Lake County Department of Transportation right of way. So there is going to need to be some curb and gutter there because this area here in the corner is very special, Illinois Nature Preserve, so we need to make sure that we don't change the drainage and flood out all those special plants. But it's there, it's coming, and then you will then have a cross connecting to Daniel Wright Woods and just a short hop over to the Des Plaines River, so I think it's going to be just a great amenity for really anyone in Lake Forest, because I know your sidewalk and system path continues on the other side, on the east side of Waukegan Road, and so it really will be a connection for people who want a nice, big loop. And as Mike mentioned, moving ahead with the Middle Fork Bridge, there's a lot, and the Middle Fork path connection, and I know what the city's got in mind. I think there's going to be so many exciting connections made here in Lake Forest and connecting to a wider trail system. That'll be a real amenity. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about that. I'll be happy to leave you the map if you'd like that map to see that. So that is coming along. Next, just a little update on Fort Sheridan, and we are moving ahead, getting additional input for a master plan there, looking at parking, looking at the different uses there. And I guess your commissioner, Commissioner Rumel, you already mentioned the Glyphre project, and I know we've had a lot of great conversations with that. But I think what's so exciting, and one of the things that I want to connect with about Middle Fork Savannah, is the incredible diversity in natural resources. I mean, Lake Forest is a beautiful city and known for its trees and its ravines, but also these other public lands. The Fort Sheridan Forest Preserve has become a real mecca for bird watchers, and I've been meeting with them, hawk watchers, I don't know if there's any bird watchers up there, but just so you know, that the information we have, and it's very good, well-documented information, there are bird species during migration season, peregrine falcons, the wild ones, not the ones that are eating pigeons in the city, merlins, which are a small falcon, and the rough-legged hawks, which kind of look like, if you're not a bird watcher, kind of the size of a red-tailed hawk. We see those three birds coming through at Fort Sheridan, and there is not another place until you get to the Atlantic Ocean, and the birdwatch place is there, that you see that combination of birds there. So it is unique, once you get off the Atlantic Ocean, no place until we get here to Fort Sheridan. So I think that's something that's really special and exciting, and the restoration work that we're doing there is just really going to enhance that, and just sort of another, if I may say, feather in your hat, sorry, can't help myself, here in Lake Forest, because I know you've got your property and you guys have been so integral in taking care of your ravines, and those bird species and things wouldn't come if there weren't wider areas that were preserved. So we really compliment you on what you've been doing. And then my last item is something that, again, is a longstanding partnership and going back many years, and that is with Middle Fork Savannah, which I believe the first parcel was bought in 1989, about 43 acres. And that is actually a tall grass prairie, tall grass prairie savanna, and there is nothing like it original in all of North America. Again, the specialness, the railroad being there, that, there was a 25-acre parcel that through the railroad and different owners was never plowed, was never even grazed, and there was nothing, as I said, nothing in all of North America that's like it. This ecosystem is one of the most globally threatened ecosystems, well, globally, in the world. And I think we often think of the rainforest and the biodiversity and everything being threatened in other places, and yet right here in our backyard, we have something really just as valuable and just as threatened. And working again with different partnership, we've removed over 11 miles of drain tiles and done restoration on the oak savannas, there's sedge of marshes there, and that remnant prairie has grown, and the sorts of diversity of birds and plants that we see there, federally endangered plants, federally endangered birds, the whooping cranes now are stopping there, a number of other very rare bird species. There's evidence of the native fox, the gray fox, coming back there, and so it's just incredible what is happening there. And all this restoration work was recognized, right? Well, this is just, you guys, I just hope that if you all haven't been out there, maybe today is not the day to go, but you could go skiing, I was, yeah, skiing, but, you know, I just hope everyone here or anyone who's watching realizes what a jewel you have right here in Lake Forest, and we have this award. It's going to be posted, it's the Chicago Wilderness, it was the platinum, which is the highest, Excellence in Ecological Restoration. And this is for conservation leadership and exemplary use of best management practices in natural resource restoration. And so we're just really excited about it, and I think it really shows what's going on, and you have been such great partners, and again, you have lands nearby, you've worked to restore your lands, and this partnership is very important to us, and it's important globally. So I just came to share this with you and thank you for your partnership, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You all good?
I actually have a quick question. What specific part of the savanna is the area you were talking about?
The original, it's back, excuse me, back by the, where the railroad tracks are.
Sort of in, to the, sort of in the middle?
Yeah, yeah, but it's been.
The trail goes around?
Yeah, but, so that's been expanded, so there was the thing, the part that had never been damaged, and restoration has now increased and brought back that plant diversity, the red-headed woodpeckers, which you can also see at Fort Sheridan, specialty bird there. And so that was sort of the seed, and it's increased, so we've got, boy, I forget the exact acreage, but it's healthy enough to have these species come and visit, and some of them are breeding, and it's pretty unusual. So you may remember about, in 2008, there was a bio blitz, over 100 scientists came to Middle Fork Savannah for 24 hours. Again, this is the sort of thing they do in the rainforest, although they drop them there for a week, but they were at Middle Fork Savannah for 24 hours, and they found 1,200 different species of living things, plants, bugs, all sorts of things. So that's quite diverse, but the diversity in a savanna is much more than most people realize. So that's all. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I just have to tell you how excited I am about the Everett Road connection, because it was maybe in June or July of this year that I emailed Commissioner Rumel, and I said, I have this great idea, and I sent him a picture of a Google Earth satellite photo from the roundabout down to Daniel Wright Woods, and I said, how about a connector? And I even drew dotted red lines on there. And I said, this way you could get into the Des Plaines River Trail and ride all the way to the Wisconsin border. And he wrote me back, your wish is my command.
That sounds like Commissioner Rumel.
I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
So I'm just ecstatic, and I'm offering to be out there with a shovel if you need some manual labor.
I will, I will, I will take you up on that, and I have to say, I'm excited. As we all know, sometimes government moves more slowly than we wish, so my four sons, who I would shepherd along the way, well, they're all in college or out of college, but maybe they'll shepherd me along the trail when that's all built. So it's very exciting, and as I say, it's going to be a great boon to many communities around here, so I'm very excited about that, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
I just wanted to throw one more thing in. As you're out at the Middle Fork, we've had a couple of people who've called us, and I know they've called the city. You continue to look at, buckthorn is an invasive species, and we are busy getting rid of it. And as we continue to get rid of it from south to north, you have people saying, gee, what happened? I can see everything now, like the bears facility. Just so you know, it's because we are getting rid of that buckthorn, and we spend about $150,000 a year removing buckthorn from the Middle Fork, which is bringing us back to this natural state. But, you know, and our big-time intention would be to have it all gone, but that's way too aggressive a project, but every year, I think we spent $80,000 or $90,000 out there this winter getting rid of more buckthorn, getting things more in position to continue to get rid of it. But it is an invasive species, we are trying to get rid of it, and as you see it get rid of, you'll see more things, like you see the train now, you see the bears now, because we're continuing to move north, just so you know that. Thank you.
Mike, and thank you, and Ann and Mike both, on behalf of the residents of Lake Forest, thank you so much. You've got a lot of exciting things happening at the county level, and we're grateful for all you do for the city, so thank you.
Mike and Ann, I want to say thank you as well, and actually, it's extremely timely because, as the council knows, one of our goals for 2015 is to try and reconnect our residents with many of these areas that we take for granted and we just overlook, and I think your explanation of what's happening at the Middle Fork and at Fort Sheridan, we don't sometimes realize that we have these jewels right in our backyard, and we should be taking advantage of them more than we do. So we're going to really be promoting that throughout 2015, so.
Feel free to call me, I love to be a booster for any of those things, so feel free to give me a call, and I'm happy to come, talk to any group, and get them excited about Savannah.
Great, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Karina was going to give you an update about electric aggregation. We're going to hold this over to the February 17 meeting. There's some issues that are still being worked out on the wind down of that right now, so we want to hold off on that presentation for a couple of weeks, but we'll put it back on your February 17 agenda. But in lieu of that, I've asked Michael to come here. He does look a little tired, and he'll explain why.
Mountain Dew.
But, yeah, if the Mountain Dew wears off, he'll probably fall over right there, but we wanted to make sure that the council and the community was aware of not only this event that occurred in the last roughly 36 hours, but I think more importantly, with all of the downsizing that we have done in the city, how that affects some of our operations and how we're still able to adjust and basically do an all-hands-on-deck approach to the operations and try and have those roads open, as you said, Mr. Mayor, and address some of the other things. So, Michael?
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we'd like to present an overview of this weekend's storm, what we have done thus far and what we plan to do for the remainder of the week. A lot of people have asked today what the snow total, the official total that we have received was 18.2. We heard another one that was at 18.5, but it's between 18 and 19 inches that Lake Forest received. The forecast for us calls for 1 to 3 inches coming Tuesday afternoon into early Wednesday morning, and then possibly some freezing rain Saturday night into Sunday. So that is what we are looking forward to addressing as well. The overall response began at 7:30 on Saturday evening. We had four guys in, there was some freezing rain that started, and they began to salt at midnight on Saturday, we'll call it 12:00 AM Sunday. We brought the entire crew in, and we actually split all of our personnel into two groups. We actually utilized all personnel from Public Works to include our sanitation guys, our refuse collectors. We're actually very thankful that the storm happened on the weekend where we had the ability to pull those personnel. The engineering inspectors as well, Parks, Forestry, and Cemetery, all of their personnel. Community Development, their building inspectors came in and helped, and helped today as well. We have a program called the Snowbirds. We contractually hire six personnel that actually come in and utilize our vehicles. They have CDLs, and they have their own routes that we assign them. And then we contractually have some buildings where we have hand shoveling crews that'll handle what we refer to as more the major buildings, Gordon, City Hall, Rec Center. So that really was the team that has been put together, the staff, everybody has been placed on 12-hour shifts, midnight to noon, so that will go on for the remainder of the week. Today and tonight, we have a crew that came in at 6:30 this morning, they're going until 11 o'clock tonight. They are going to be removing snow and working at removing snow in the 140 cul-de-sacs that we have. Not sure if we're going to get them all done by 11 tonight, but we're going to keep going. The crew then that comes in at midnight is going to start hauling snow out of downtown as well as our parking lots.
Mike, you might want to explain why the cul-de-sacs are of such interest.
We had a lot of calls today. The cul-de-sacs are just very tight. There's very little room to put this amount of snow, and some residents were having a difficult time getting out of the cul-de-sacs. We definitely have, when we have this amount of snow, have a very difficult time getting our refuse equipment in. If we have a tough time, the fire department can't get their fire engines in, ambulances will have a difficult time, so we've got to hit those cul-de-sacs quickly, and we're doing so. We've got two crews out, we're hauling snow to Old MS, but they simply just become tight. If it was a couple-inch snowstorm, and again, leading up with the snow that we've had thus far, we've been able to place snow appropriately throughout a cul-de-sac. Here, now with this amount of snow, there's really no place to put it, so we've got to haul it out. If we can quote "hide it" in people's front yards, we will try and do that, but for the most part, we'll be hauling the snow out, so. Tomorrow, as well as tomorrow night, we will continue on hauling out of all the parking lots in the downtown area. We will try and do some what we refer to as curb runs. We need to try and get closer to the curb to open up the catch basins. Again, you've heard me say this before, what's on my mind is the March 15 rainstorm, where it's 38 degrees, you're going to have an inch of rain, and all the snow is melting. The storm drains need to get open. We'll be working on that. We also, obviously, will also be plowing and snowblowing the sidewalks. Wednesday, Wednesday night, again, we're going to continue to haul the parking lots in the CBD, we'll finish sidewalks. Again, half the sidewalks, we'll be using the snow blowers, it's going to take a while. The other half, we will plow. Thursday and Friday, we're going to begin to bench the streets, bench plowing, you've seen on some of the state routes already, basically where we're giving ourselves room for the next snowstorm. So we take that snow and we actually push it back into people's front yards a couple feet. That again allows us to open up the curb line, so when we hit that curb with our plow, the snow has someplace to go. Right now, the snow is too tall. It simply rolls back behind the snow plows. So we've got to get the snow pushed into the yard to give us space for the next snowstorm. The other thing we'll be working on actually throughout the week, the street corners, the pushbacks, so when you pull up to the stop sign, you can see around the corner. Salt usage, we, on this storm, reverted back to the way we've been doing salt December 1 to January 15. We did that because of the rain, freezing rain that came down Saturday evening. A lot of these streets have got a layer of ice underneath them, and with the sun out and the salt, you saw probably today, some of the streets are beginning to have running water. Our estimated totals, we have not yet put it into our spreadsheet, but I did a quick tally on all the route sheets that were handed in. This storm from 7:30 Saturday night all the way through 3 o'clock this afternoon, about 204 tons. The winter total so far, including this event, has been 1,200 tons, and again, we began with 2,300 tons minus the 1,200, we have 1,100 remaining, plus we have another 600 that we will take delivery of at some point. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Michael?
I have a question, and, Mike, forgive me, I might have just missed it. The snow gets taken away to where?
Old MS, Laurel and Western.
Okay.
We have worked with the consultants that are going to be working with us on the project to rehab Old MS or to sell it to the developer.
Sure.
So we'll be placing the snow in a spot that will not impact that development in the short term, and if need be, we'll haul it again, or we'll lay it out in March and April to get it to melt faster, but we've got a spot. April to get it to melt faster. But we've got a spot, it's basically the old canal's property, where it all goes, and it'll all be piled up, and it should melt by June.
Well, again, I-
Bob will have me melted by March 1. It'll be melted by March 1.
I would be remiss in not complimenting the team the city has put together to clean the road. I mean, we were just, George and I were just saying, didn't they say 6 to 8 inches? I mean, it seems rare to be off by a foot or more. Nonetheless, you guys were ready, and we're very, as residents, very, very appreciative.
Good. We're very, really proud of everybody that pitched in. You know, you take a step back, and you look at all the activities, everything that was done from 7:30 Saturday evening till now. There's a lot of logistics behind it, but it truly is a team effort. The guys doing the bridge decks, or the sidewalks, are as important as the guys that are doing parking lots, or any of that. So, we split everybody up, and they're working very, very well. The fleet is holding up very well also. So, we're going to hit it hard this week and get the town cleaned up.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Michael. And that completes my report.
Thanks, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda, Property and Public Lands Committee, purchase of real estate from Lake Forest College relating to the Central Business District, train station parking presented by Karina Walters. Karina, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, the Property and Public Lands Committee is recommending the purchase of parking lots that are actually owned by Lake Forest College. Now, just to orientate you on the overhead above, the east train station, or CBD train station, the college owns a portion of the parking lots. The city owns a portion of the parking lots, as well as the Union Pacific owns a portion of those parking lots. So, it's really a convoluted kind of partnership, but over the last several months, the city originally thought that we owned the parking lots. However, it actually came out to fact that the college did. So, just to briefly update you, in 1992, we had a lease that expired in 2007 with the college for those portions of the train station parking lot. And we were actually paying them based upon commuter usage, if you will. The lease expired in 2007. We resumed, we started negotiations and discussions about the new lease in 2010. Those communications halted due to the college, but we resumed discussions again in 2013. The college received an appraisal for the parking lots, and their appraisal came in at approximately $2 million. The city questioned and wanted just another perspective with respect to the appraisal, so we had a secondary review of that. The review came back at approximately $1.5 million. And given the fact that within the last eight months to a year, the city has solidified a contract with Zipcar for the parking lot, we're going to be receiving, or we have received a grant in the amount of $1 million for the separation of vehicular, as well as pedestrian traffic at the train station. We really realized that the majority of the work would be done on the college property. So, we needed to clear this, as well as own the property. Based upon the fact that the midpoint of the negotiated price was approximately $1.7 million. So, both parties agreed that that was the negotiated price. And what the paid, how this would be paid after the closing is, at the time of closing, we'd be paying approximately $957,000. At, in July of 2015, we'd be paying approximately $173,000. In July of 2016, we'd be paying another installment, if you will, to the college for approximately $173,000. And in July of 2017, based upon the building permit fees, because the college will be building capital at their facility, that would offset that, the remaining portion of the fees, if you will. So, the Property and Public Land Committee is recommending to you this evening to purchase the parking, those portions that are owned by the college. If you have any questions regarding this, you can please feel free to ask me, as well as members of the PPL.
Questions for Karina, or for Alderman Pandeleon, or Alderman Edelman?
I have a question. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
First question I would have is, where exactly does the $1.7 million come from? Because I don't really remember seeing this on any of our budget proposals.
As Karina mentioned, we currently have $890,000 in our reserves that was part of the paid parking fund that has been folded into the general fund. This was money that was collected over the last 15, 20 years from developments that occurred in downtown Lake Forest that made a payment in lieu of putting parking on their site. So, we currently have about $900,000. Afterwards, and you'll see this at the March 9 budget meeting, we've put the balance of the payment into our CIP program to pay that debt off less, as Karina mentioned, the permit, the building permit fees that will, that Lake Forest College will be responsible for, associated to the renovation of the Johnson Science Building. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what it says in the-
Right.
-in the agenda. I guess the assumption, though, is that this is not $957,000 that has always been scheduled to be used for this purpose, that we assumed that that would be used for other things.
No, the 950 was earmarked. It had to be used for some parking-related improvement. So, we could have bought other land in the city for parking, but it had to be, because we collected it in lieu of, it had to be used for parking purposes.
Okay.
As a follow-up to that question for whoever wants to answer, we're not getting one new parking place by spending this money, right?
That is correct.
Which I think is kind of where you were heading. Is there a better use for this money? Because why do we have, why doesn't the college continue owning it? I realize it's inconvenient with the construction-
Right.
-and they could stand in the way of improving the McClory Bike Path, which I doubt they would, but they may. But we haven't given them the opportunity to say they would. It just seems like we're paying for something we already have, that the seller has no other use for, that we would control through zoning anyway.
Well, yes and no. Good question, and those were some of the early discussions that we had with the college. Because as Karina said, this is something we've known ever since the original McClory Bike Path went in, but we were, if you will, leasing the spaces from them. In about mid to late 2000s, they said, listen, we want to get out of leasing. We want to do something. And then particularly with the pending improvement to the Johnson Science Building, they are looking to monetize this asset.
I understand they're, I understand they want a lot of money.
Well, so what they did was, and we said, well, let's determine what the value is, because we said the exact same thing that you did. What are you going to do with this property? And they basically came back and said, we will sell this to a private company, and you will have private parking in your downtown area. So, it would no longer be under the city's control, number one. And number two is, no, we wouldn't be able to put in the parking, or the Bike Path, because they would prohibit us from making the adjustments, because it would encroach on their ability to maximize the utilization of their property. So, it basically came down to, do we want to let the college privatize parking in downtown Lake Forest, or do we want to take control of the property?
That's a good reason.
Yeah. And I have to be honest with you. We didn't think of that either, but they came back, and they said, we were in touch with a couple of companies that may be interested in this. And we just said quite candidly, we can't let that happen.
And the other question I had is, what happened to the, this is paid parking, right? You have to pay to park here?
Yes.
What happened to the revenue from 2007 until today? Without a lease, we don't have to pay the college. Where'd that money go?
Part of this deal is that they are waiving, I think it's roughly $33,000, plus what we owe them for 2015 as well, so that's not-
Seven years of parking here is worth $33,000?
Yeah, I think they're-
About $36,000.
No, it's their portion.
Just their portion, that they would have been-
The revenue off this piece of property for seven years was $33,000?
That's the proportional amount of, when you buy a parking pass to be able to park in this lot, that's what their proportional amount is for the land that they own.
It's not the full amount. They get a percentage.
They only get a percentage based on their land.
Don't get a percentage without a lease, and we haven't had a lease since 2007, you said.
Yeah, but the lease has been sort of continuing, if you will, because we were negotiating or going back and forth on this. There was unfortunately an individual in the college who passed away during the midst of this, and so it just sort of dragged out until we were able to reach conclusion. But during that period of time, we didn't pay them, but we, if you will, owed them and just held on to the money, if that makes sense.
We owed them money when we didn't have an agreement with them.
Right.
I don't know how that happens. It doesn't happen in the food business.
Well, because basically, we're squatters on their property. We had an agreement that was continuing on a month-to-month basis, but as long as we were in the midst of negotiating the acquisition of it, they were willing to let it ride.
Kind of a record handshake, we'll keep paying you, wink, wink kind of thing, or?
No, no. In real estate, what happens is, when you have a lease, it expires. And if the two parties neglectfully, or for whatever reason, don't get around to renewing the lease, it continues. The old terms continue. Or there's oftentimes language in there about it continues on a different basis, at a default rate, but-
What did this read?
Pardon?
What did this agreement read? How was this one continuing?
Well, I don't know. I don't know. But it doesn't mean that our obligation to pay them ceases just because the lease expired and we never renewed. It does continue.
Because we are continuing to use the land and collect parking fees, or, you know, parking permit fees.
So, we just held back their payments of their percentage of the parking fees that we collected?
Right. We were tracking them the whole time, and we had an accounting of how much that fee was. And that's where that $33,000 plus change came from.
Okay, maybe later, we could just, I don't know how you could track an amount of money without having an agreement, I guess, and-
There was an agreement.
There was an agreement.
That expired in 2007.
No, it goes month-to-month, when it's not renegotiated. It's written right in there.
It is written.
Same terms and conditions.
Okay, because she said it expired in 2007.
Well, the lease expires, but then if there is no, if there is not a renegotiation that's successful or completed, the lease typically will have a provision in it that says, it just keeps the same terms and conditions month-to-month.
Even though typically it does, this one had it for sure?
It's a holdover tendency. It's kind of wrong.
Yeah, it's in everything. Sometimes it's at double rent. There's an incentive to get the thing. This one-
Okay, I just didn't understand how that would work, so.
How many acres is this that we're purchasing?
It's approximately 1 and 1/2 acres.
Yeah.
Or about 66,000 square foot.
And I might add, as a comparable, that was in our city code right now, and where we collected the $900,000, if you are required to create, if you will, let's say 10 parking places as a part of your building, or your expansion of your building, we use a calculation of about $15,000 per parking space. In this case, it works out to about $12,000 in parking space. So, it's actually less than what we would charge a private developer right now pursuant to city code.
Relative bargain compared to the Jackson property.
Well. I think Karina made another point that I just want to reiterate. The college had an appraisal, the city got an appraisal, the agreement was struck at the midpoint, which had we decided, for whatever reason, to pursue this by eminent domain, that's exactly how the price would have been determined. So, it's a, it does appear to be a reasonable value for the land. And I think also just about what residential property sells for, you know, just raw residential lots in less desirable locations than right in downtown, and it's around that same kind of number.
I think just as a follow-up to, Bob and I have spent multiple times talking to President Scott about this, and he's been very reasonable with working with us relative to payment terms. Obviously, we're extending the payment out over multiple years.
At no interest?
At no interest, so that we're not, it's not hitting our CIP and FY '16 significantly more than it could be, and working with waiver of fees as well in in-kind services. So, the college worked very hard to kind of find something and find terms that made sense for the city. And obviously, as Bob has said, it wasn't something that we could let get away. Any other questions? Anyone from the public like to comment or ask questions about this matter? If not, I'd like to ask the council if I could get a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract for the acquisition of the parking lot properties from Lake Forest College.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Roll call vote, please, biddy?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
That's five yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Karina. Next item on the agenda, consolidation and approval to accelerate funding for the Emerald Ash Bore Program, and approval to continue existing contracts for FY '15 ash tree and stump removals presented by, and Alderman Waldeck is not here this evening, but Chuck Meyer, Superintendent of Parks. Chuck, good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council. We have had a lot of discussions over the last few years about Emerald Ash Bore, so I won't talk too much about that. I'll get right to the point. One of the things I will remind you that we said over the years is that managing the EAB issue would be dynamic, and it would require that we adapt. And we're at one of those points where we feel it's a critical point to change our plan and accelerate it. So, no doubt, you've noticed many of the tagged, the green tags on trees throughout the city. And as a matter of fact, we tagged about 2,000 trees last summer. There are still 1,263 tagged ash trees out there that need to be removed. We have expended the money that was in the FY '15 budget, that was $200,000. We've expended that, and we still have those trees out there. And as we've said many times, the ash tree gets very brittle, and these trees are either dead or dying. So, we're concerned with the safety issues there, and the trees do present a substantial risk. So, we would rather not wait until May to go back with funding contractual removals. So, we're asking that we accelerate it. So, this is in your packet, but we have the original plan laid out here. I won't talk a lot about the tree replacement, but the removals, you can see, we had the 200,000 for '16, '17, and then we dropped to 150. And then that was the point where we believe that we would be finished with the majority of the inventoried ash trees. So, in addition to that, we have the approximately $30,000 a year, but it's broke up a little different for the ash tree treatments. And I'll remind you that we put that in there, we've been treating those trees to mitigate the losses. We do intend to cut down many of those trees in the future, but we didn't want to have to deal with those, with all these other trees. So, there are 650 of those trees. And it, sorry, in the accelerated modified plan, you can see that we are, I've added FY '15, the current year, we're looking for an additional $160,000 to fund contractual removals before May. So, our goal is to have those 1,263 trees down by May. We can't do them all through contractual funds, even with 160. We are also looking at- We are also looking at accelerating our staff removals. So we have put together a plan, and as a matter of fact, it was supposed to start today. It's likely going to be delayed, again, one of those dynamic natures that we deal with all the time. But our staff, the forestry section will be teaming up with Public Works, Parks Department, and we're going to hit this hard in the next few weeks. So by doing this, we will be, sorry, I keep hitting that, we will be taking money from future years and putting $160,000 into the FY '15. And then one of our other concerns was if we just get the money from next year, come May, we will be sitting there with no money for an entire year. And we want to and plan on tagging this summer. So we want to be better suited to deal with the trees as they're tagged. So as a result of this, you can see at the end here, we actually save $100,000 in the tree removal budget by doing this. So there's a substantial savings, and that mainly comes from the acceleration of staff efforts. So through this fiscal year, '15 and '16, we're doing more in-house, we're doing a lot of contractual removals, and it would save approximately $100,000. By doing that, we will then start taking some of the treated trees out of that program. So we'll start dropping off the treatment, and then you, on this final line here, you can see that that drops another $80,000. That's our estimate, you know, we'll have to see which trees we will take out of the program. But overall, by accelerating it over the next five years, we save about $180,000. So we are also, I mentioned the tree replacement program. Throughout this plan, we have said that we would like to focus on removals right away to get rid of the risk. But as we take care of that, we want to bump up the amount that we spend on tree replacements. So our budget this year is fairly small. We have $60,000 for FY '16. We do plan on using that, but in the coming years, we hope to bump that up. And we are right now making plans, and we'll be bringing you more information on plans to re-green or reforest Lake Forest. We want to look at how we can partner with the community, how we can get things done in a timely fashion. We also want to be careful that we're selecting the trees for the conditions or for the site. We're not necessarily looking at replacing every tree where it was taken down, but we also want to make sure that we're planting a more diverse forest. So a lot will go into that planning, and we're looking at accelerating that in the next couple of years. So along with this, so we are seeking the $160,000, and in the write-up, you can see that we are also seeking that we continue with the contract that we have for FY '15. It has been very successful. We had approval for the three contractors that are listed on there. We've used Canouken and Clean Cut. We will continue to give them work. They have said, we've contacted them, and they have said that they are able to jump into this right away. So we're very satisfied with their work, and we'd like to continue that on. So we're also seeking approval to continue that with these additional funds. With that, I will take any questions.
Can you explain where the funds are expected to come from?
This is from the CIP, the budgeted CIP. So we're asking for 160 now. We originally had that budgeted in the next few years. In March, when you have your CIP meeting, you will see the revised plan. It would look like the bottom chart here. So we're not really asking for approval on this, but it'll be approved through the whole CIP.
Except for this initial acceleration.
Exactly.
Any other questions of Chuck?
I don't know, Alderman, if that got exactly at your question. Basically, we are front-loading, if you will, the program first through reserves, but then we will make it up through reducing the CIP over the next five years.
Okay, so we're not, we're actually reducing the overall long-term budget by $180,000?
That is correct.
Okay.
I have a question, not related to the exact topic here, but how's it going? Are any surprises? Is it more difficult, less difficult, or more trees dying, or less?
Well, it is, and I think back four years ago when we started talking about this, we said that EAB tends to be somewhat exponential in growth. So the first few years, you see it slowly spreading. It is clearly all over the city now, and it is at that exponential part of the curve. So we're seeing that as going up rapidly. So it is, most of the trees are, I would say all of them, to be honest, are infested, but we are seeing the woodpecker damage, and you're seeing the trees that are failing. We expect that to even go higher this year. Now, the good news is, if we're able to keep up with it this summer and into fall, by this time next year, we should have substantially eliminated most of the inventoried trees. We won't have taken out the 650 that are treated, but the treatment is doing very well. We have seen great results with that. So I guess it's not really a surprise. We expected it to grow quickly at one point. We want to just stay on top of it, and we feel like we've handled it well. I think, you know, a great deal in our forestry section, they have kept up on it, they've been very helpful in letting us know about this and informing us that we needed to step things up. So it's greatly due to their efforts on this.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve an authorization of an additional $160,000 for the city's FY '15 accelerated EAB eradication program to be performed pursuant to the approved FY '15 tree removal contracts. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to? Come up and state your name and address, please.
Paul Hammond, 511 Beverly. I have a few comments regarding TIFs or Tax Increment Financing Districts. I believe that the most important thing that the city TIF consultants said was that two communities had more than 50% of their town in a TIF district. If Lake Forest followed that path, then all the city capital expenditures in the future could be handled without relying solely on the real estate transfer tax, plus I believe that the pension funding issue could be resolved. Let us look at the numbers. There is a new Wesley Road subdivision that will be building seven new homes. With the average real estate tax bill in Lake Forest being about $15,000, then seven homes times $15,000 would equal over $100,000 per year in increased property tax revenue. $100,000 times 23 years, the length of a TIF district yields $2.3 million. Normally, the city of Lake Forest would receive only about 20% of the $2.3 million, or about $460,000. But if those seven new homes were included in the Laurel Avenue TIF district, then the city of Lake Forest, through the TIF Advisory Board, could potentially see an additional $1.8 million of revenue. If the city of Lake Forest included half of the town in the Laurel Avenue TIF district, then imagine the additional funds the city of Lake Forest would have access to in the future. Since the city of Lake Forest is going through the lengthy process of establishing a TIF district, then I am proposing making the TIF district over 50% of the town, similar to how two other towns in the state of Illinois have proceeded. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens wish to address the council? Seeing none, move on to item number five. Items for omnibus consideration this evening. There are five. I'll read them all, and as we normally do, if any member of the council would like to take them individually, we can do so. Item number one, approval of the January 20, 2015 City Council meeting minutes. Item number two, the check register for December 27, 2014 through January 23, 2015. Number three, resolution of appreciation for Mark Bentley, the Gorton Board member. Number four, resolution of sympathy for former water plant operator Fred Rasher. And number five, ratify a letter of understanding between the city of Lake Forest and school district 67 and 115, in which the city of Lake Forest agrees to provide qualified school resource officers to the high school and district 67, while the school districts will absorb 67.79%, that's 33.90% per district, at the cost of the most senior SRO. Any member of the council wish to take any of those individually? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
Mr. Mayor, can I just mention that the city attorney has provided the clerk with some minor adjustments to the minutes that are included in your packet, and if acceptable, we'll just incorporate those changes into the approval.
Thank you, Bob.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Five yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is ordinances. No ordinances before the council this evening. Item number seven, new business. Any new business to come before the council? Anyone from the council? No new business. Additional items for council discussion? If not, I believe next item, next council meeting is a week, two weeks from tomorrow, February 17, in consideration of the president's holiday. And if seeing no other business to come before the council, I'd ask for an adjournment. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.